Yeah. Can I move it even?
Okay, yeah.
Bottom left. We'll leave room slash grid. Uh, yeah. All right. All the order. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Councilmember Bump. Here. Councilmember Happy.
Here.
Councilmember Keller.
Here.
Councilmember Seager.
Here.
Councilmember Pruitt.
Here.
Councilmember Famon.
Here.
And Mayor Lynn.
Here.
All right, additions or amendments to the agenda?
It seems as though the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation was left off the agenda and would like to add it to action items.
That's process for that? That's not the way it works. Yeah. I think the.
Mayor and city administrator.
Well, council. In sentence of council.
Like to add an item to the agenda.
So give me amend the agenda if there can be this council thing, is that how the, or we just.
Well, the vote actually, if we're adding something to it. If there can be a motion to amend it, a second and then a vote to amend the agenda.
Okay. Want to make a motion to add that to the agenda?
On a second.
Oh no, you go ahead and make the motion. I hear the note.
No, I mean your motion I can second, that's fine. You asked me to.
I put uh, and um, uh, cascade law ex.
We can.
Expanding heritage fund proclamation to the agenda.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Right?
Oh, sorry, I, sorry. I don't know, out of lack, I have a problem with this. I sat in my classroom today during a down moment and gazed around at the diversity that existed. Do I not get to speak?
When is the question?
When Yanni comes up.
Yeah, we, we are doing the motion to see, do we want to, so there was a motion and a second. And don't we do discussion?
Yeah, all right. Yeah.
All right, so I'm like, oh, I'm sorry, I guess they.
No, you're good, you're good, Eric. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
I sat in my classroom today during a down moment and gazed around the diversity that existed within the group of thirty students. I thought of how my perception of the world has been broadened by the diversity that exists. My students of Hispanic, Hispanic Latino descent are joyful when they share their music interest, their passion for soccer, and the pride in their family's hometown. It made me think about how my world has been positively impacted by their contributions to the community of my classroom. My life is better because of my experience as volunteering in Mexico, learning slang Spanish from my soccer athletes, and discussing the cultural differences in the family dynamics with my good friend. Yet this is only a small list. However, that positivity was brief abruptly ended after reading the summary of Justice Sonia Sotomayor's dissenting opinion released today, today. We should not live in a country where the government can seize anyone who looks Latino, speaks Spanish, and appears to work a low-wage job. It made me think of the hardships my students face, such as their housing, their challenges to navigate the education system, to navigate the medical system, all to make our community better. My students sitting in my classroom from Cascade, Wash. My students sitting in my classroom from Cascade Locks, Oregon can have their unalienable right to liberty taken away from them while enjoying a soda on a park bench. We just spoke and gave our allegiance to justice and liberty for all. For just being a Hispanic member of our Latino community. And it made me remember being chastised by the mayor that she does not represent one group of people, but the entirety of the community within Cascade Locks. Yet when representing the entirety of the community, she missed that there is a thriving Hispanic Latino group. But by consciously not putting the proclamation to recognize that Hispanic Heritage Month on the agenda for the meeting tonight, she ignored them. Recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month is not proclaiming one diverse group as superior to another. It is the recognition that differences exist between cultures, recognizing the beauty, recognizing the contributions, recognizing the benefits, all while recognizing the hardships the members of the Hispanic Latino community have faced and continue to face.
Thank you. Courtney?
As per the comments in the last meeting. I was accused of denying our community members by. I mean, I wasn't on the council at the time. But for, for my thoughts, feelings and beliefs that I have on proclamations such as these. I was accused of denying community members. And just like I said in my interview. I want everyone to be seen as equal and I want our actions to represent how we feel about accepting everybody regardless into our community. You know, at the. At the last meeting. I was told that I should have voted a certain way because I was a woman. And that's what I'm trying to stand up against. I want to be seen as a council member when I sit right here, not as a female council member, not as a mother, not as an electrician, but as an equal that sits across the room with these tables. And that's why I'm against these proclamations, not because I'm not accepting, but because I fight for the equality that I see. Which is we're, we're all on the same playing field. And it's not to say that I don't want women to see me and be inspired, you know, I. But I don't, I don't want to divide people. I'm, I'm very happy to celebrate everybody and give everybody their, their time in the sun. But it's proclamations like these that. It's a slippery slope once, once you recognize one, then you have to recognize them all or else you'll be denying members of the community. But, but I would like to celebrate the fact that we are all community members. And maybe the statement should have been stamped for after we voted if we wanted to put this on the agenda. My fault.
Right.
So then.
Bernard.
So I've got a process question and I have a comment on the proposed resolution. So. The thing is, if, if an individual council member wants to put something on the agenda, they could approach the mayor one-on-one. Uh, they could approach the administrator one-on-one. Again, that doesn't mean it gets, it ultimately gets decided by the mayor and the administrator, but then he's like a housekeeper, he pulls things in, sits down with the mayor and they have a conversation on what go over the agenda or not. Now, if you don't do that, you have the other option of during council comments saying, I'm interested in having a conversation on this, whatever the issue is. Are there three other members of the council who support that going on the agenda? So I, is that what the council rules say?
No, it is, um. It is a consensus of the council, the mayor or the city administrators who sets the agenda.
Okay, well, when does that take place?
During.
During the council, so like if he brought it up, then we could do a consensus and then that would.
During the council comments, right?
Yes, that will be the time that.
Yeah, I just want to double check.
Yeah, and it's, and it, uh, comes into it in your council procedures. Cause I always have to look too, because I don't remember everything.
Right.
But that is the problem, but it takes the consensus of the council, the mayor or the city administrator.
Okay, that, that, that's my understanding, okay.
Or, or just to add, I mean, we could also amend the agenda like we're doing this evening by putting it to a vote.
Right, but it still takes a consensus of the council to get it on. If the mayor don't want it and the city administrator, then it takes a consensus of the council.
Okay, makes it, it also takes consensus of the council to amend the agenda?
Well. Um. Kathy, do you know without me looking it up?
No, I don't have to look it up.
You go ahead. Okay, but the.
But, but we're still. The city administration administrator in coordination with the mayor sets the agenda for each council meeting. The city administrator and mayor maintain a two-to-three meeting preliminary agenda, which we do. Artists may be placed on a preliminary agenda by consensus of council or by the mayor or city administrator or city attorney. So this should be done prior to the meeting where we say, because we set the agenda a week before. We, we, we set this agenda last Monday.
Okay, but read, read what it says on your agenda, right there.
Yeah, the mayor or presiding office to make add items to the agenda after it is printed and distributed only when required by business necessity and only after an explanation has been given. The addition of agenda items after the agenda has been printed is otherwise discouraged. And that's because people can't, they don't know, they're not qualified and they can't attend. Does that make sense?
That totally makes sense, again. Just to review, the time that we would, well, get consensus is during council comments of another meeting.
Yes, that would be, that way it has plenty of time to get on the agenda. I can make note of it or city administrator and then we do that.
That's, I just want to clarify that, okay.
And I just want to make a comment real fast.
Go ahead.
With regard to the resolution of this proclamation, I didn't know that, uh, this was started by President Johnson and then expanded by President Reagan. You guys know me, I like bipartisan ideas. The fact that a very, you know, uh, important leader of the Democrats, sixty and followed by Republican in the eighties, uh, has supported this type of recognition. That makes me very supportive of this type of, uh, this proclamation, so I would be supportive. Uh, I would be supportive of this, this proclamation and resolution, uh, for the city of Cascade Locks. Having said that, and again, just to review, I respect our rules and when the agenda says it's discouraged.
Yeah.
I would prefer that we use that method to have these, these, these pre-conversations regarding what's on the agenda. Cause you're right, the county, the community doesn't know.
No.
And they can't, they don't have an opportunity to, so that is the ideal method. I just want to, you know, make that comment, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I just, go ahead, Pete.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm sorry.
Were you first?
Sorry.
And I agree, I agree with that, there's a process. Uh, you don't go online and, um, put it online. Were you notified, Mr. Bennett, about, um, receiving emails concerning this proclamation? Were you talked to beforehand before it was posted on Facebook to contact you?
Councilwoman Keller emailed, I and the mayor requesting it on the agenda last week, early last week, maybe the week before.
But were you contacted about receiving emails about the proclamation?
I asked if I had received any public comment and that was it, and I haven't received anything.
But were you, were you asked?
No, I did not ask you.
Okay. So I, I just, it was a backhanded way to try and get something on. We all, the, the purpose of doing it during council comments is to see if there's a consensus, to see if this, if the council wants, uh, to spend time or energy or money and staff time on an item, not, uh, not the other way around. And I appreciate Bernard bringing that up. Thank you, Tiffany.
I just wanted to comment that the statistic that really sticks out to me is thirty-one percent of the students in the little Cascade Locks elementary identify as Hispanic or Latino and/or Latino, and it's a third of our student population. And, uh, I understand, and I, again, I, I appreciate Bernard's clarity on process to get these on the agenda. And I just would encourage the mayor and the administrator to put these items on there even if you don't know that it's necessarily going to pass, but it allows us to have a conversation in, in public format, um, around that, so. That's all I have to say on cap.
I didn't want to say that I am not against it or anything, but I have since I've gotten sworn into office. City administrator told me one of my very first meetings that I was walking into a divided council. And I have fought that ever since. I don't like the division in our town. I want us to be one and united, because we are so powerful, united. And that's why I sit here every time saying I represent everybody, I'm nonpartisan. It's because I really do and I really want to. I know most of the Hispanic people that live in our town. So it's not because I'm against anybody, it's because I don't want to keep creating all these divisions in our town. Because if we keep dividing these groups, then we'll just have a lot of division instead of us all coming together and being citizens of Cascade Locks. The other thing is whenever it got put on Facebook, you invited everybody to come. Seven point three of our council procedures says council members should not ask citizens to appear at council meetings to state a complaint or question that has not been previously presented to staff. As a first step, council members should refer the citizen with question, complaints or suggestions to the city administrator or the appropriate department head. Council members may further explain that if the citizen is not satisfied with the results, they may present their issue during the public input portion of the next council meeting. Council members should always inform the city administrator upon receipt of a citizen inquiry or complaint for which some type of follow-up is necessary. So we should always have them filter them through and not encourage, and I've seen that, like if you have a problem with this, please come. And I just want to stop the division that we have in our town. What a lot of people don't know about, and I really don't need to go on to say this, is that I have children that are Hispanic. And I bet most of you don't know it, I have kids, grandkids that are among. I have a family that is the United Nations, so I'm far from prejudice. I am united. And that's how I want our town. And that's probably way more information than anybody needed to know about me, but it has nothing to do with me being against anybody, because I'm not. And does anybody else have any comment before we go on? Go ahead, Eric. Thank you, have your hand.
It's the recognition. It's the recognition of these cultures and the recognition that they do exist. And it's the recognition of the benefits that they provide our community. That is what the purpose of this is to say. Is to say we recognize diverse cultures and we welcome diverse cultures into our society. We, as people, have to understand that the cultures and the hardships that they face are barriers of entry into our society and we have to recognize them. That's what being inclusive is, is to recognize this. This isn't a, a society. We, I, 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 I mean, I sat here two years ago and a council member asked why we need to put publications in Spanish with a person present trying to get some extra credit for a class whose parents don't speak English. And you wonder that recognition of the hardships that they, that they face and what they bring to our community? It's just, it's a, it's a, it's a way to say thank you for being a part of our community. We value you, we value what you bring to us.
I just really want, I, I appreciate what you have to say as far as trying to bring our team back to that again. We've been fractured and when I see this, I don't see this as like a way of dividing this. I see it as a way of all of us standing behind the residents in our community, in our community that are Hispanic and telling them that we appreciate you and we're glad you're here and you make our community better. Because they're not seeing that in other places around the country. So that's what I see this, this is not about further dividing this, it's about all of us saying, no, we, we, we appreciate you and we're glad you're here. So I just, that's how I look at it anyway, I, I agree with you. I don't recognize this one portion of our town, I'm here to support everybody and I want to see that division go away.
Courtney? And then we'll go on, please, so we can.
To start here, and then, and then there's going to be another group that feels left out. And then there's going to be another group that feels left out, and then there's going to be another group that feels left out. And that's going to continue on. I would rather just say that I love to accept everybody into our community and, and I'm welcoming of everybody instead of trying to, one, once you put one out, then somebody's going to feel slighted. And once you put two out, someone else is going to feel slighted. And, and it's, it's, you know, one of those things where you can't make everybody happy and you'll just be chasing your tail trying to make sure that everybody feels included. Whereas you can just preemptively accept everybody and not have to make wrong statements.
So even though we have a, a motion and a second on the floor, looking at the directions, are we going to pull the motion and do a consensus to get it on the next agenda? I just call for the vote on whether or not to amend the agenda. Is there a certain way we should do it, Gavin?
I think you can. I think you can do whatever you want, there isn't much on the floor.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I think we need to take care of that one way or the other.
Yeah. Okay, so can you restate your motion?
I made a motion amend the agenda to the Cascade Locks, uh, proclamation honoring his family heritage month. Do the agenda. I was seconded by.
Powers, yeah. All right, and we're done with discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So. Who all was aye? Okay, so three. Say yes and four two no. It is no, it will not be added to the agenda. All right, moving on. Adoption of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda, which includes approval of the action in minutes of August twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five. Ratification of the bills in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-three cents and the annual OLCC license renewed.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have one quick question, I did send it in. I, I, I'm just curious how we, um, how payroll starts after, I mean, a, a check not in the register, how, how does?
Because payroll is normally done on Monday or Tuesday, I did the bills list on eight-twenty-eight.
Okay.
So we did this payroll, the payroll was processed on, I think, Tuesday this week.
Yep.
Agenda went out on Wednesday, I added it to the bills list. So there is a check that was actually cut after accounts payable checks was cut like September first or something, I was going to wait to throw that on the nine-fifteen accounts payable list. It's just, so that's the one check that's not on here, that's in between payroll and that.
Right, okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor of adoption of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, adoption of the consent agenda has passed unanimously. Parents of in-United citizens to share in a variety of pers- as perspectives on issues facing our community.
That one, um, yeah. Yeah. What's that? Heard your laptop. Or using that little thing.
Oh, yeah.
Moving on. I didn't, no, obviously over here didn't receive any, um, emails or written comments, so.
All right, thank you, public hearings.
No public hearing.
All right, action items, we're on to adopt ordinance number four-six-three amending zoning and convergence of planned lands.
Right, ordinance four-six-three approves the changing of fifteen tax lots. Uh, tax lots zones from a mix of commercial, commercially residential to residential to downtown. This will put the majority of the tax lots affronting one across streets of the same designation of downtown. The ordinance was reviewed and approved for recommendation for council approval by the planning commission on April tenth. A public hearing occurred at the May for council meeting. A first reading in front of council was held on August twenty-fifth. The ordinance comes in front of council for a second reading and adoption. Chapter, chapter. Chapter, chapter, uh, tax for review are the ordinance exhibit A containment traffic impacts of the changes in chapter eight of the charter. A copy of the ordinance was provided to council and posted at city hall seven days prior to the reading. Meeting the requirements to read the ordinance in title only as long as no council member objects. Does any council member object to reading in title only? Right, ordinance four six three, in ordinance amending the Cascade Locks comprehensive plan map and zoning map for the downtown district.
I move to adopt ordinance four six three, updating the zoning and comprehensive plan maps. Second.
Alright, we got a motion and a second for adopting ordinance number four six three, any discussion? Mary Ann?
Some questions, um. I noticed that, and I know this from last time, that the church is going to be in residential. What happens if something happens to the church? How do they rebuild that? It's just gonna be in residential, not myself.
You mean downtown?
Downtown.
It's gonna be.
It's gonna be in downtown, so can they rebuild the church in a downtown?
If I remember correctly what Amanda said the last meeting, as long as they get their permit within six months. If I remember right, but I'd have to double check that.
Okay, and pardon me for not knowing, but I know Kathy would know, what is Annie Drew's address? Oh, you don't know, okay, sorry, um. That house. That, that, that house was dismantled. Um, what, I know that's already in the downtown zone, but how does this affect that one? That house, what, what was that?
Lot.
That lot.
It will be downtown, so whatever they, whatever development. Will be proposed for that will have to be what's in that zone.
Okay, so it's been already six months, they haven't asked for a house, so now a house cannot be built in there, correct?
Correct.
Which lot is this?
The, the old, um.
Where the what?
Where the monkey puzzle tree.
Oh, it's down by the.
That's our downtown, right?
Yes, it's been downtown.
That was the Santa family house, it was. Yeah, boy, yeah, so they.
But, but it's affecting, I don't.
But when you tear it down. Now you, new development follows the.
Yeah.
Whatever's on, whatever's on, it is, new development follows that.
Correct.
Okay, and um, I'm not sure, what is? Bernard, you brought up last meeting that uh, somebody was putting something over here.
So, you may remember, I think they attended.
They attended one meeting, yes.
Oh, okay. And they had some concerns regarding this proposed zone change. And whether it would hamper or, you know, obstruct some of the, the development plans they had, they were conceiving of. And I asked, you know, I believe it was an immediate email exchange and we sent that developer to Amanda to say. Hey, tell them what your, your concerns are, and then she'll have a better idea on whether they're, they're really concerned or not, you know. She understands what can go here better than anybody, and I asked if that didn't resolve, and I don't, is that?
It's specifically addressed in the next ordinance on the meeting of the twenty second.
You said that.
Yes, the, the que- the item in question is a cottage cluster. Which our original proposal was not be allowed or conditional use in the downtown zone. Ordinance has been updated to allow it, we're gonna present it to council on there if they want to allow it or not.
Okay, and can you explain what that is? I'm sorry.
It's a bunch of tiny homes on one lot.
Tiny homes?
Yeah.
With, with their own parking?
It, it, in, in a nutshell, it's tiny homes.
Tiny home, I'm sorry, um, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, in White Salmon, just off of the main street, there is one of these developments and they're like. I would say they're, they're probably non-conforming homes under normal construction, they're very small, but they don't have wheels, they're not on a train.
Yeah, no, I didn't.
They're, they're, they're not like tiny homes like that.
But they're still small homes.
They are small. Yeah, and at least in that, it's mainly like older folks that have no kids at home, they, they wanted a smaller footprint.
Workforce housing.
Workforce housing.
But that, that has to. So everybody make sure you're called on, because when everybody talks, they cannot keep minutes, not even digitally, so, okay. Bernard?
Yeah, so, we had several cottage developments in Shoreline when I worked up there. And if they're, you know, if your, if your code is right, they can, they can be really uh attractive. Uh, amenities to your community. The ones that did it right, they had community gardens, they had, it's like a, a, a community like. Uh, almost like a building where they have a shared kitchen, they were doing community meals. But, and then, and then the parking, it wasn't every person got a parking was like a, a co-laid parking. So, um, and it was all to enhance green space and, 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 and make it very livable, you know. And these were lost, so it was like seven to nine hundred square feet, sleeping up top, you know, a great room downstairs. And it wasn't just seniors, it was those young couples uh buying these and renting them, uh trying to get a starter home, they're, they're foot in the door, you know. So it can be really nice, I, I just wanna say that tiny home, I mean, it's effective, I think it's a fair characterization of these, I've seen, you know.
They're tiny houses, but they're not tiny houses.
They were, they were not, you know, junky at all, they were very high quality.
Eric, did you have your hand up and I missed you?
Oh, I wanted to address um Ms. Pumps' issue of the church. Religious buildings are conditional use.
Okay, Tiffany.
Okay, that, all this discussion about tiny homes is the next council meeting, we have to get back on track for those houses.
Is that all you had?
Yeah.
Courtney, did you have anything? Alright, any more discussion on ordinance four six over here? Alright. Let's, alright, all in favor of adopting ordinance four six three to amend the zoning and comprehensive plan map, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Alright, so the adopt ordinance four six three has passed six yays and one nay.
Uh, there is a thirty day waiting period before it goes. So once that is passed, we will get our maps updated for application.
Alright. Alright, on to resolution number fifteen. Fifteen twenty three, the water rate.
Okay. Village LLC has completed the rate analysis for the city's water distribution system. They have determined that we are over collecting on debt service for the system improvement, but under collecting on rates to operate the system. Work session was held on July fourteenth and August eleventh to discuss the rate change options. A first draft of the, of the resolution came before council on August twenty fifth. Before council today is an updated resolution one five two three. The changes requested by council at the August twenty fifth meeting had been implemented. However, staff advised caution in changing the meter base designation from a rate to a charge. As this may limit council's ability to adjust the amount in the future under the two thousand eight charter amendment. Resolution one four one, which currently sets utility rates, identifies the meter base as a rate. The discrepancy originated from the billing system, which incorrectly labeled it as a charge. While council has expressed interest in updating the resolution to match the utility billing language. Staff recommend the opposite, updating utility bill to reflect the terminology used in the resolution. Staff acknowledged this is, that this erection may cause confusion among residents and could be perceived as a covert change to the fee structure. However, it is simply a clarification that can be easily documented and communicated. For the average res- residential customer, our usage rate is a one-time increase from two fifty. Two, two dollars and fifty cents per one thousand gallons to three dollars and seventy two cents per thousand gallons. The be- meter base amount is a one-time increase from nine fifty per month to twelve dollars and seventy cents per month. The average residential customer will see a decrease in their water system improvement loan charge from twenty dollars per month to fifteen dollars and sixty seven cents per month. The meter maintenance fee, fire flow fee and CCTV loan charge will be unchanged. Resolution one five two three and resolution one four one four are attached to review. City Attorney Cleveland has reviewed resolution one five two three. Uh, council's options are to approve resolution one five two three, amend, amend and approve one five two three or knock it for resolution.
Let's make a motion to move for uh resolution fifteen twenty three.
Second it. You're all on second, you guys.
Alright, now we've got a motion and we've got a second and we can have discussions, Tiffany.
Okay, so I agree that we need to change the bill to reflect what the resolution says. Um, and we'll just have to answer the questions when they come. I also. Uh, we need to do the same for the electric. It's the other, because we have.
I have to check it.
But we have, we have electric usage charge, electric meter base charge.
Yeah.
And well, with this, will there still be a summer rate?
Yes, that doesn't change anything.
And how, and how, well, what do we do now? I'm sorry, I'm not really.
So we call it.
It's the same amount, it's just how much we use, it's based on how much we use, right? That's what it is, because we use more in the suburbs.
Thirty thousand.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, never mind, okay, I, I, but I mean, you can explain it if you want, go ahead. Um. And, and then I hope Bernard will explain this, um, loan interest thing, and then I have a question. I'm going out after he explains this.
I wanna stay on the um, one thing for right this minute for on the, how we're changing on the bills. Can we just finish that piece and then get into the loans, is that okay? Um, on our resolution, it talks about a meter base charge. And however.
Right, you say fourteen fourteen, I see, do you mind?
Uh, fifteen twenty three, sorry. So on section one, we call it a meter based charge. But on my current bill that I just got on nine fifteen, it calls it a water meter based rate. So we changed it from charge to rate already, because my prior bill, even all the way back to twenty nineteen, it was a charge. And now it's a rate, and even in our resolution on fifteen twenty three, we call it a charge. So, that's my input on that.
So, I'm sorry, are you, are you saying she changed it to rate or so? What are you saying she did in the resolution?
Well. In the resol- well, they should match whatever we do, but we just went and changed all of our bills to same rate. In order to be able to increase it, because a charge we have to put before the people, a vote of the people. So I feel like we changed that to rate, but yet on our resolution on fifteen twenty three, we still left it as a charge. So, we need to figure out what we're doing there and get it where it all is the same. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I talked to Carrie about this, oh gosh, a couple weeks ago now, about updating the utility billing format. This was before council had the discussion of keeping it a charge and she. Not, not jumped the gun, but she updated it to match what the resolution says. What, what, what the current resolution says, and so fifteen twenty three says charge, because that's what council. Consensus was, and that's why I highlighted it. That is, it did say rate, if you go back to the version I presented two weeks ago, it said rate. And I've updated it to charge now per council's consensus.
Okay, and then I'm gonna take it over.
So, and.
Go on this.
Yes, I wanna kinda, even, yeah, I agree with Tiffany and the city administrator, we should just. Maybe so that matches fourteen fourteen and if it was a rate, um, that way the lineup is.
Matches fourteen, you mean it matches fifteen twenty three?
Don't match fourteen fourteen.
I thought fifteen twenty three. It seems to go back to being a rate, so it matches fourteen fourteen, that's what the bill should say.
Yeah, it was a rate, but on the bill, just so you guys know, as citizens, they're gonna come to you, because it's always. Even back to twenty nineteen, it's always been a charge. And now we're changing it to a rate and we're gonna raise it. That doesn't look very good.
So I, I asked and looked at all of the water rate resolutions, it has been called a rate since two thousand four. This isn't a new term, it's something in the billing system where it got labeled a charge and not a rate, so it's in the resolution. It has been water based rate since two thousand four.
Um.
Tiffany, go ahead, Tiffany.
I forgot what I was gonna say. Courtney, I'm trying to go on the wayback machine here, uh. From, from being on the charter review committee, I know we had discussions about. Um, a- administrative. Raises, but then I thought even on top of that, that there was language somewhere. That allowed us to, and it's a language that allows us to do the increase every year, um, for, for utilities. Anybody know?
Tiffany, mine, if you could pause for a minute. Do you know, Tiffany?
Do you have them?
I, I know. But the language that allows us to raise the, the rates every, every year for utilities.
What's a rate? Because our chart is not specifically limit rate increases, only charge fees and taxes. On charges.
Yeah, charge, fees and taxes, so, I'm just pointing out that. Because I see that as a charge and it's been that way probably on my bill ever since, but I just went back to two thousand and nineteen. Cause it was easy for me to pull that, and we've always called it a charge, and all of a sudden, we're talking about increasing and we change it to a rate. And that just looks kind of. You know, doesn't look good to me, so.
Go ahead, Tiffany.
But sometime we have to fix it.
Yes.
Sometime we have to fix it, and, and it, even as a rate, it's still gonna need to come before the council to get approval. And so, I mean, if the citizens are not happy, they're gonna let us know, I mean, so, I mean, it's, it's. It, he's not gonna just be arbitrarily be able to ra- raise the rates. Look, he'll have to come to the council, give us a presentation of why we have to do it, and we're gonna either say yes or no, so I mean, I.
Yeah, but the difference is, I think for the people is, if it's a charge, you come to the people, but if it's a rate. The council, you don't have to put it to a vote.
Bernard?
Okay, so just so I'm clear, customer through it, you're proposing this read meter based rate.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, okay, that's my first question, and I, I support that.
Here's the.
Right, exactly, no, I, I, okay, um, and. With regards to the bill. I think, you know, the, the, the origination document should always be a resolution. The bill was not the origination document, you know, so if our bill said charge, but the resolution said rate. I feel very comfortable, and look, there was a, a miscommunication in, you know, structuring the bill. To say charge, it should have said rate, because our rates have said that again since two thousand and four. So I, I don't, I, I feel very comfortable in defending that language change. Uh, both in our resolution, you know, and this for the listener we're proposing, and, and in a bill conversation, if the customer has that.
And I, I totally agree with that, just so we all are on the same page, so when that customer or citizen comes and asks us that we all. Are able to tell them the same thing and we're not saying, oh, I don't know why they did that, and we, I can give them a good answer, so they don't feel like it was. You know. To be transparent, whenever they might feel like we're not being.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, any other questions on rates or go ahead, Carrie?
I just have a comment here, um, in resolution fourteen fourteen. It says, beginning with July thirteenth billing period, each customer shall pay the following water meter maintenance charge. Fire flow and monthly cap capacity charge, it says charge.
That's. That's the current.
Meter based charge, meter maintenance charge, sorry, wrong base, my bad.
You, you're good? You're looking, okay, so.
Yeah, it's fourteen fourteen.
Fourteen fourteen is the current.
Doesn't say meter maintenance fee, it doesn't say fire flow fee, but yet on our bill it does. So what is the difference between, it's always been a charge?
Okay, sure.
Okay, Tiffany, if I can, that's for the meter maintenance.
Charge, okay, that's for.
Okay, that's for the meter maintenance charge, we're not.
I know, I misspoke, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, and also the fire flow fee is, but were those are not, those are, those are things we're not changing.
Right, I understand that, but you're changing wording that. The wording isn't in fourteen fourteen, but yet we can change it in fifteen twenty three with no problem. So I'm saying, I'm done.
Thank you, Mary Ann Courtney. And then when. If if council likes the word charge, and then in the future, well, something needs to be changed. Prices need to be. A fixed somehow. Um how how is future council going to present that to the community? How is that possible?
Bernard, I have to take a stab at that. Look, I was on the charter committee, we had. A very thorough in uh conversation with the attorney, uh with the L C model uh mo- model charter. And I feel very comfortable that this resolution is administrative in nature and is not subject to the two thousand eight charter amendment. These are charges that are are taxes that are created by an ordinance and change city law are the ones that are subject to. Uh the the term and that, and that's that's what what was was discussed in the in in the in these several of these meetings. So I'm 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 just one council member, but you know, to my council member, right? I am fully comfortable adjusting any of these uh rates, however you want, uh a term on. Uh because it 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 it's my understanding that these are uh administrative in nature and therefore aren't subject to voter approval. And that's what that model charter said, and they had the language that said that, that explained that when when we went through that, so I'm very comfortable with that.
So can I just clarify something real fast and then I'll call you? So the current, then we're gonna go back and change that to rate, or is the charge correct on that, and we're gonna leave it that way? That's what he said.
On the resolution?
No, the bill. Where whatever, whatever furniture, whatever council decides, that's literally be.
Okay.
Whatever they decide in the resolution, the bill will match it.
Okay, now you can go ahead.
So at the point earlier I had um. Bernard, councillor Seager mentioned that the 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 legal document, the resolution listed as a rate, not a charge. Uh the second item, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I did not look this up, there seems to be precedent for this. In two thousand thirteen, the rate, base rate went from eight twenty five to nine fifty, and I don't think there was a vote for that. I think that was a council book, council vote, not a not a ballot vote, so there is precedent for it. So a rate, you don't have to go to the people, correct?
All right, so do are we good with?
We've thought we changed that one.
I just want it all to match.
To be and so.
So they don't have the problem going down the road about this conversation, let's just send them away and make it match.
So should I amend my motion to, I mean, well, I will before we vote, but I'll amend it to say rate and not charge. But because I think we have other discussion like when it's gonna start.
Okay, I see some of that.
I know it's. Well, but we can, okay. And then.
And then the um the second part of it, Bernard, I guess.
Okay, why are you gonna amend that motion?
Well, one round, I think we still have to decide on a date of when we want to make some rate, we're increases to start.
Go ahead, okay, so. All right, um so. When I was. Getting ready for this meeting, I rewatched the meeting I missed in August, and my votes were in town, and. Wanted to hear the conversation the council had to better understand how maybe I could. Make the case that we should take our rate from uh twenty down to eleven to meet our debt service needs. And during that conversation you had, I learned that because if we've been, I would argue, overcharging. Taking a twenty instead of eleven, we're meeting our debt requirements because only elevens, and that nine has been building up. To a to a point where it's almost a million dollars, that's what the administrator said during those conversation in August. I said, oh my god, a million dollars, so wait a second, I'm gonna take a million dollars and pay off debt. That I'm only borrowed at one and a half percent when my L G I P is making four and a half percent. Financially, that doesn't make sense, you keep your money making four and a half percent and not pay off debt that's one and a half percent. So I I I just curious, I ran the numbers, like, how much would that interest, would that debt make? Or that that, I'm sorry, that that uh that million dollars made over, I think I put twenty seven years. And it's like, it's a lot of money, it's like one point nine million dollars in interest. And I said, well, maybe we can, maybe an option for council to consider would be. We keep that money invested in L G I P, accruing that interest. And then at the end of the, when 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 we've got enough to pay off the debt, which would be an earlier timeline, because that money's getting building. That's when you make the payment on the debt, your last payment, and then we can keep the rate at eleven dollars and still. Reduce the length of the loan and save a lot of money. So that's what I wanted to pitch to you guys, once I lost the list of those meeting. As everyone know, I I I I wanna try to keep our rates low and flat, and the fact that we're already rating our our meter base rate. Our meter base rate is going up, and then our usage charge is going up. If we can reduce the 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 thing to eleven, again, it evens out. And I think there's math here to show it's a financially sound thing to do for the council, so that that's what I wanted to pitch to you guys.
Anybody else got any question about that?
Go ahead. I just really appreciate Bernard doing the the kind of the the homework on, you know, rewatching the Zoom recording, he did. It's for all in that meeting, but I didn't remember the million dollars that.
That wasn't mentioned.
I remember now, in hindsight, the administrator saying we overcollected that million dollars analogy everything, but I I couldn't, I didn't remember that at the time. Um and when we were trying to have this discussion about, you know, one and a half percent industry and. What inflation is, it was really hard to kind of really put that into real numbers, but when you ran the. The math to say how much of that's actually going to accrue in interest by investing that million dollars versus paying it off and and saving. Four hundred and seventy two thousand dollars in interest, it really i- it's a pretty uh, you know. Clear e- evidence, I mean, I understand the intention overall was to save citizens' money and avoid paying that interest, but if we pay that off now. If while we do save four hundred and seventy two thousand dollars of interest, we are losing out one point nine million dollars in uh in interest.
It in earning.
That's right. So it did, it helps to have real numbers, I just wanted to thank you for that.
Yes, Courtney.
And you know, even even if the market changes, it doesn't mean we can't come back and look at this and and reassess, you know, but. I I feel like for right now, you know, looking at the numbers, it makes sense to.
But I'm so, just to try to put a bow on this, so it would like be my uh request that council consider. Change the resolution to to uh, I think it was option one, that said eleven ten instead of fifteen. Uh and and uh and and we do that, and again, monitor it, monitor the market, and just to be clear. We're at four and a half percent right now, is is that that's the L G I P, does that sound right?
I think it's like four point three.
Okay.
Looked in a lot.
All right, so I'd say there's a a fair chance that, you know, the economy is gonna slow, and the fast gonna need a roller, and that will, it will steady, but it's gonna go to zero? There's not, there's not a lot of uh, you know, speculation on that prime. Uh I think it's gonna settle three, three and four, and even that is much better than one and a half percent. So anyway, I I feel like it's a strong case, I I would just request you guys consider that.
All right, any other discussion? Go ahead Tiffany.
When are we gonna implement this? I think we.
Oh, yeah.
Aside on data.
So I noticed on the bottom of my bill, just so you guys have some food for thought, that we have electric service rate increase on ten one. And then we have a sewer rate increase on ten one. So I'm thinking, I don't think we should probably do a water grade increase on ten one, but so January.
On the resolution, it says, beginning with November twenty first.
Yep. Is that what we want to do, November twenty first?
But I will agree with that because I I do, I am supportive of reducing the debt service to a lot of dollars, even with the the. Rate going up, where average consumer uh customer is gonna see the bill go down, so.
Yeah.
Did you want to go ahead?
Can I support that as well, uh the understanding that your lower. Uh uh lower usage customers, they're gonna have, you know, they're 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 going to have a a overall rate decrease because. Of the debt base fee coming down, so it does play their hand, so I think I'm buying November twenty first.
Okay.
Okay, so I will amend my motion to um include that section one be labeled a rate and not a charge. And that the W S I P loan being at the table one level, which goes at eleven dollars to ten cents, I'll second that.
All right, no discussion?
All right, so all in favor of resolution fifteen twenty three as stated by Gruet, say yay?
Yeah, hi.
Hi. Yeah, so it's been a long day. Long day, so did everybody say hi, I'm sorry, all right, so that was unanimous. I'm sorry, guys, it's been a really long day. All right, moving on. Committee appointments.
One minute, let me get my paper.
Yep, yeah.
I I gotta do some updates, so yeah.
Take your time.
Every time you think you get it right.
Yeah.
Just wants a decision.
I I should be wanting a decision, so I'm happy.
Here. Check out, done. Done.
All right, committee appointments, um the city has the below openings on its advisory committees and commissions, planning one opening term ending twelve thirty one twenty eight. Budget, one opening term ending twelve thirty one twenty seven, tourism, two openings, both terms ending twelve thirty one twenty seven. The city has received two applications for the tourism committee, Sally Drew and Heidi Halliwell. The mayor has nominated Ms. Drew and Ms. Halliwell for appointment, their applications are attached to review, council's options are to appoint applicants or not appoint applicants.
For motion to appoint. Uh Ms. Drew and Ms. Halliwell for the um.
Tourism.
Sorry. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of. Nominating Drew, Sally Drew and Heidi Halliwell for tourism committee, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, all right, as unanimous. Both of them are on tourism committee with terms in and on twelve thirty one twenty twenty seven, and thank you guys for being on for it, so. Just wanna make sure that we're doing our um, giving them the pack and stuff like we're.
Just post three, okay.
All right, thank you. All right, committee reports?
No committee reports.
Audit update?
Um we have submitted all the requested documents to the auditors, um as of writing this report, we've not received any more new requests. Um given their nature, we might at this point, um every time we think we're done, they send another list. Um we've asked the auditors to pinpoint a completion date, we've not received one, we'll continue to work with them until we reach a date to share with them. They're they're hard to pin down.
Any discussion here? Go ahead Bernard.
So, let's see, so today's nine eight. And. And we we understand we're ninety five percent.
Correct.
Okay. So I'm gonna just put on my project manager hat. It seems like, you know, just to kind of rough this out, um. October may be a a reasonable, you know, guess.
Yes.
On when this thing will be done, okay.
I I don't wanna without a date from them, I don't wanna.
I understand.
Put anybody in a hard spot.
Yeah. Ball on here, so if we can get this thing done by October, then the twenty three twenty four will start about October. And last time, we we uh. We started one, what was our anticipated time to be completed?
I think the original goal was May.
So I think.
Yeah.
Five months.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so do you have a sense, are we getting better? Will we all just be more efficient?
Yes, this this twenty one twenty two took.
I'm sure they're messier, the older they are, right?
Correct, yeah, and then with the single audit for the wastewater treatment plant, we've provided them everything for this year and next year. So that should be a whole lot faster, we've we've given them every possible document.
Okay, but then come one Jan, we're now behind on twenty four twenty five.
Correct, and we're gonna, we're gonna request an extension from the state.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Yeah.
Any others?
I know not the answer council wanted, but then. We're right.
Okay, I'm just advocating that I'd like to see the audit tracker, even if it's. Yeah, in in the background would be helpful, I'm grateful that Marion has it here I can kind of look at, um so.
Should have been in your.
Did I?
It was.
Oh, thank you, get a hand out.
Yeah.
I just had to.
Yeah.
Thank you, all right, guys, thank you very much for having us. So we started this on twelve seventeen, is that right?
Yeah.
And so looking at October, we're talking ten months as opposed to five months.
Correct.
Originally hoping for, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any others? All right, moving on, we've got city administrator Bennett report.
All right, um McCord Creek funding, um to ask councils aware reimbursement for the million dollars required to complete the power line relocation. At McCord Creek was approved through House Bill five thousand six, however, the bill did not specify reimbursement mechanism. Uh this week, which was in last week, ODOT provided an agreement for a one million dollar grant to serve as the reimbursement method. Attorney Cleveland has reviewed and approved the agreement, which I signed and submitted on September third. Regarding the second relocation, uh funding has encountered a challenge, the final cost uh is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, ODOT has committed to covering fifty percent. However, engineering team is disputing ODOT's claim that the vault was placed incorrectly. Meetings are scheduled with our engineers to review documentation and determine a perfect path forward, and I'm also circling um in attorney. Excuse me, Cleveland in this process as well. Um essentially what happened, ODOT is saying the vault shouldn't have been anywhere in that, anywhere near that place to begin with. Um even if we did put it in the right spot, it still did have been moved, but since according to ODOT, it was about ten feet to the east. They're saying we put it in the wrong spot, so it's also partly our fault, even though regardless whether it was in the right spot or not, we've had it moved anyway, so. The engineers and I both think it's kind of a silly claim from ODOT, um the engineers originally agreed, okay, we. If we put it in the wrong spot, we'll own up to it, but they have gone back and relooked at documentation, they have looked at the mapping, they have looked at where it was located, they're saying they put it in the right spot. I'm not an engineer, I can't tell you whether they put it the right spot or not, um so I'm I'm roping Attorney Cleveland into this to see what the next steps are. Um so ODOT is committed to covering sixty thousand dollars, um I don't want the city to come down having paid the other sixty, so.
I thought, didn't um you get that in writing that they were, they were at fault and we weren't gonna pay anything before this?
I got, I got it written in email from ODOT that they cover fifty and our engineers covered fifty. Um the project manager took it to their corporate office based in South Dakota, they reviewed the documents, they said no. We put it in the right spot, we're not covering. Okay, so that's what we're right.
Eric.
Um how we understand the the legal fees involved in this, and at what point in time is it just economically feasible just to own up and like, where is that balance?
Uh that's a good question, um so far Ruben has really not spent any time on this, um he reviewed the agreement and that was about it. Um we do have eight hours built into our our budget every year for your service, or every month for your service, I don't know where this will take, but.
I mean, I guess maybe you could clarify my question, but it seems as though this might go into some sort of a litigation, and that is when it gets spending.
Correct, yeah, I I wanna figure that out and figure out the path is and bring it to council, if we're gonna do some litigation, I'm not doing it without councils, so.
Bernard.
So maybe a suggestion. So, maybe a suggestion, if if engineers are disputing, and ODOT has their engineers, I can assure you, uh, sometimes it helps to get like a third party.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna talk to Ruben about, all right.
And again, you, a thousand, two thousand bucks, to me, that would be money well spent if we can save a six.
Exactly, yeah.
So, uh, especially if we feel confident this third, this neutral will, will bleed, will kind of side with us, you know? I would, I would be, I would wanna be very comfortable, that's gonna be outcome again, if we pay someone to do this third party evaluation.
Correct.
If you're not, then you gotta try something else.
Yep.
Pete.
Side with us is, you know, what is us, you know, how do they side with us, because really, they can either side with the engineers and say they did put it in the right spot, and, but ODOT's only committed to paying fifty percent. They never, you know, even if they took a hundred percent responsibility, they never agreed that they were gonna take any more than fifty percent.
And, yeah, and we have it in writing that ODOT was gonna pay fifty and the engineers were gonna pay fifty percent. Right, in an email.
Engineers were paying, not city law.
Yeah. Yeah. So why are we even?
Then that is, oh, I did not understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But there's, if there wasn't anything wrong, I mean, if they got approval and put it where they were supposed to, I, I wouldn't wanna pay sixty thousand dollars either for it. Yeah, but the city should, that, we shouldn't have any discussion about us paying anything, because that was the whole purpose of getting them writing that it wasn't our fault.
Okay.
Right?
I misunderstood.
Go ahead, correct me.
Just, just, um, so I'm clear about what's going on, we, we went to put a vault in and ODOT then came and said, sorry, we, we, we know we approved that, but it's actually in the way.
Correct.
And so then we go to move it, and now their engineers have looked at it. Where we were approved to put that vault, we ended up not actually putting it there, and we put it too far east.
That's.
And that's why they're saying like, oh, well, no, you didn't put it where we approved.
Yeah, correct.
Because we, we didn't put it where, where we were told to put it, we put it too far east, and that's why everyone's backpedaling, because had we put it where we said we were going to put it. Then it would have been.
It's still.
Then it would have been covered.
Yeah.
But it would have been their fault that we put it where they said.
I don't, I mean, as you all know, ODOT's struggling. I mean, they are inching pennies, so they're trying to find any way to not.
So now it seems like no one wants to pay anything, right, like ODOT's saying, you put it in the wrong spot, and the engineers are saying, Lewis, why are the engineers saying that they don't wanna pay?
They're, they're looking at the, the mapping and what the, the engineer's design says, they put it exactly where they were supposed to put it, ODOT is saying they didn't. So, yeah. Um, ODOT has presented an agreement to cover that fifty percent, but I'm not signing that until this gets figured out, yeah, cause then they're, they're beholden to just the fifty percent.
Yeah.
Do we have unpaid bills at this point?
Uh, we do need to pay DJs electric for the actual work, so.
So DJs is the one that's not getting paid by working for some of us out.
Yeah, I was hoping this would be resolved sooner, but, um, yeah.
And who's on the hook for paying DJs?
Uh, we want to actually pay DJs, um, we invoice ODOT or engineers for it, but we pay DJs, we're, it is our system that.
So I guess, I think that's important to clarify is, you know, we're on the hook for the hundred and twenty grand.
Exactly, yes.
And we're hoping that we can get ODOT or the engineer to reimburse us. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, moving on.
Working form and final interviews, onsite final interviews are scheduled for October second and October ninth. Stat anticipate presenting the recommendation to council at the October thirteenth meeting. Uh, transportation system plan, our assigned ODOT representative Louis Kelly provided a brief update, ODOT remains in negotiations with the consultant and has initiated discussions with their tribal liaison to begin tribal consultation process. No date has been set for the city's onsite engagement, but Mr. Kelly remains optimistic it will begin this fall. Um, this, because it's essentially we're kind of on the outside looking in on this, even though it's our TSP, it's, ODOT is paying the consultants directly, the contracts between ODOT and consultants, and they will work together to help us build our PSP, so. We're kind of on the outside in, and when they're ready, they'll come in and start the process, so that, that's why it's a little wonky. Committee liaison position, Jake Ross Bright has accepted the, the position and will begin on Monday, September fifteenth. ODOT Small Cities Atlaman Grant, we have entered into an agreement with our civil engineering firm, Current McLloyd, to serve as project engineers and administrators, tentative timeline includes fall twenty five, winter twenty six, survey and engineering work, late spring, early summer twenty six, construction phase, we are also exploring the opportunity to upgrade aging water lines during the street work, uh, this proposed upgrade increased the line size from two to four inches and include the addition of fire hydrants at the end of the roads. A couple smaller items, um, added here, uh, fall dumpster days will be on Saturday, October eighteen, from nine AM to four AM, we will be promoting that here shortly. Uh, next Thursday, the eighteenth, is the Small Cities Quarterly Meeting in Hood River, Hood River City Hall at eleven AM, I believe. Uh, and then the annual LOC conference is October second through fourth, and early bird registration closes on the eleventh, so it is open now.
I was gonna ask, is anybody going to the LOC in Portland, because somebody should go, you're going.
I'm going, I registered, and just like the vacant, basic package and a couple of the workshops without the hotel was eight hundred and forty dollars. It is super expensive this year, and I don't know why, it is, I mean, usually they're like four or five hundred dollars.
And I applied for a scholarship and did not get. You're going?
I was, I was going to apply.
Yeah, do nothing, see. Um, but yeah.
Yeah.
Finarch, I, you know, I'm in school that time, but can you go just for like a Saturday?
You can sign up for individual items, yes.
And that wouldn't be eight hundred bucks, I said.
No.
Okay. Well, what would be the budget for a council member to go, let's just turn around and get the scholarship.
Well, the scholarship's already announced, I think it hasn't.
I think so.
I think it's.
Yeah.
I think we budgeted six thousand for council, I'd have to look.
Okay. All right, well, I'm gonna look to try to.
Yep.
Go into class on Saturday.
Yep.
Okay. What is left in that account?
I don't think we've spent much at all.
It seemed.
I just.
And the financials, Ms. Wood got it first.
Oh, yeah, 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 um, I'll, I'll check, I'll update you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you done?
That is all I got, um, and then we got the August, um, sheriff's report, just I'll work on the next, um, quarterly prime update.
All right. Moving on to mayor and city council appointments, you happy? Start with you.
Not much, I just, October fourth is getting mountain biking made easy, so I just wanted, it hadn't been really widely promoted, I saw it on the Northwest Trail Alliance website. Um, I just wanted to, you know, spread the word, free registration, and, um, we're gonna have classes in clinics and skills challenges and should be a fun, because even if it gets outside.
Yeah. Is that all you have?
That's all I got, that's it.
All right, Marion.
I don't have anything, thank you.
As well, do you have, no, in your update on your class that you took? Your grant writing class?
My grant writing class.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, it was a great class, um. It's too bad that I didn't know a lot about grants before I took this, because it seems to me that every, everybody that was in the class had already were doing grants and things like that.
Oh, baseline, yeah.
Um, so, um, I just recently got a book in the mail for me, um, that they sent me, so it was a good class, it's just I wish I would know how to submit one, I mean, I can figure it out. But it would've been nice that I had known a little bit better, but I think I could do it, might take me long, but I think I could do it. And once I read this quote, that'll give me some ideas.
Do you have one on?
No, not yet.
Okay.
But when I do, I'll let you know, that's what this book is for, it's, it's grants, you know, and then LOC provides, um, when there's grants available, I've signed up for that, so I would get that information. Yeah, so.
Mary can ask another question?
Yes.
Did they talk about using AI to write the grants?
Yes.
And so what's that do with, you're like, everyone, are all gonna sound this way?
They're all gonna, right, AI, they're all gonna use, they recommend you use AI on certain parts of the grant, not every part, but only on certain parts. Cause a lot of it has to be in, in your verbiage.
Your voice.
Yes, your verbiage, what you're doing, that and stuff is, is you, but they did say AI is playing a, a bigger part this year in the grants.
Probably in reviewing, good.
Yeah, I'm sure it's free.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Marion.
Yep.
Eric.
Um, I hear a lot about members of this council, um, talking about the need for the high school back, the need for the school and maybe junior high, and I don't see many of you at any of their events, so I encourage you to, they're also teamed up with the, um, museum this year, their fundraiser is on October fourth, it's on the Stern Wheeler, um, you can buy your tickets now. Um, I don't know all the details, I just know that, there are altar point settes that you are able to purchase, they have to get their order in soon. Um, I don't know, you went to the holiday market, you still would have seen that they are from a corporation called Big Owls out of Cressham.
Okay.
They are amazing and beautiful and wonderful, they put the Costco ones to trash, um, so if you want like real legit poinsettias, then that's a wonderful place to get them. And I would ask for council's consensus to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on October thirteenth, and I will write a proclamation to get that done.
I'll read. Is that the same one that we said?
Mary.
It's a different one.
Indigenous.
All right. Consensus of the council, is that what you're asking for?
I believe that's what I'm supposed to be doing, I did it correctly last time, so.
No, that's fine, I just wanna make sure I follow what you want.
I'm supportive of putting it on the agenda.
For my year, just to look at.
Indigenous Peoples' Day on October thirteenth, I value the incredible contributions that the Native Americans have made to.
So consensus is everybody, everybody in favor, raise your hands, please. And oppose, so you don't have that. Sorry.
Are we, I believe our definition was an adamant no, or an adamant opposition, is that what we have, is an adamant opposition or doesn't?
Consensus needs also. It needs to be adamant, there needs to be somebody adamantly opposed, that's what we've been doing.
Okay, so you're asking that, right, or, or the four that are or not the four that Adam is supporting, just.
No, it's adamant opposition, it's not.
Exactly, we adamantly are, you're asking that, right?
I can be adamantly against it, I mean, I just, yeah.
Thought that's what none meant.
Well, unless, I mean, you're just gonna bring it, you're gonna have the same, you're gonna have the same numbers for three. I don't know what purpose of going forward, so I'm adamantly against it, again.
Did you have anything else there?
Nope.
All right.
Um, I'm looking at this budget thing that we just got, it looks like we have five thousand dollars budgeted for travel and training, and we just spent five hundred some dollars on the mayor's, and I, does your training come out? So this is just for us, so, so we've got four thousand, forty five hundred dollars left. Um, but that was from. Yeah, thank you. The end of July, just.
That's the budget. Yeah, that's the budget, that's the budget.
Okay, nice one, yeah. Even so, yeah, I think there's only been the one expense submitted, yeah, we can stop. Um, and I just wanna let everyone know, Special Olympics fall, uh, sports has started, and that would be bowling, swimming, and soccer, so if anybody wants to coach, all can always use coaches and helpers and, uh, go to Special Olympics Oregon, and you can find out how. Uh, how, do we know how much the new streetlights are saving? Uh, the city? Um, we, uh, uh, Energy Services Group, the company that does our rebate program, actually calculated for it, I can look it up.
That'd be nice to know.
Yeah, it's, it's a decent chunk, actually, um, like all.
Decent chunk.
So we, we actually submitted our own rebate for it, we're getting twenty four thousand dollars back, but the actual amount of electric electricity saving, I'll have to check.
Okay, so we're getting a twenty five, twenty four thousand dollar rebate?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about that really quick? Just, um, do we, and that, this kind of goes back to budget, but if my memory serves me correctly, how did the electricity for the lights, city lights actually get paid? Is that like, is there like a transfer, like, how, how do they just, do they get billed, how does that get charged?
To, like, for city hall?
No, 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 for like the streetlights, um, on the, on the roads.
Uh, we essentially just keep the cost.
We, so we don't actually have a way.
There's no actual, like.
That was my question, was could we look back in bills to see what the real estimate was, but could we see what billing was, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
And it comes out of city lights budget.
Correct.
The power bill for.
It's part of the, yeah.
Okay.
And, go ahead, read. Um, yeah, cause I just wonder, you know, uh, if there's some incentive for it as a citizen, I mean, because we're paying less and we're asking them for more wages, I did, I mean, more, uh, rates, so I just, um. And, and also, um, let's see, and the only other thing I have is, is that I read the, I went through and read some of the council procedures, and uh, five point three states discussion and decision making, their decision making, there should be full discussion of opinions and differences after a decision has been made and a vote taken, that the decision is that decision is the official decision of the council, council members should not criticize other council members or staff for acting on a decision with which council member does not agree, council members may however point out how their individual opinion differs from the majority. And, um, as far as getting things on the agenda, I think it's important that we get, uh, a consensus, because otherwise we're gonna have, the mayor's gonna have six people putting in six different things that need to be added to the agenda, and it, it, it's just gonna be messy, I think it's, this is the court, I think this is where we settle it, and it moves on, or it doesn't, or it dies. It, it dies, so, uh, it just, yeah. Are you done?
Yeah.
Did you have a question?
Um, I just wanted to defend myself and say, I presented it to the mayor with incredibly at, more than adequate time, you all researched, were BCC'd on the same exact email. And I had no idea, I did not even think that that wouldn't even be an option to put, put on the agenda, and I was never given forewarning. I had no clue that it would not be included on the agenda, and that is why, it starts on the fifteenth, and I wanted it to be done prior to the fifteenth.
All right. Finarch. So, I did have a, I wanna talk a little, ask a little about the water loss conversation that we had in the sign off last couple meetings, so it, I feel like, uh, at one point I heard someone say, our water loss could be as much as fifty percent. Which seemed high to me, um, and kind of alarming if that was the case, but there's like, we don't, we don't know. And then I learned that we're considering, uh, approaching a grant to do a full analysis of it. And in my opinion, that's premature until we know what the loss is, we need, if, if our loss is fifteen percent, I don't, I, I, I don't, I don't support spending money on doing this full exhaustive analysis on how we can find that fifteen percent. That's my opinion, I don't know, you may, you gotta maybe disagree, but I, I don't think that should be a high priority for us, I think that's normal for typical water systems, ten to fifteen percent. And it, 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 I feel like we got plenty on administrative claim, not to add that, we can do that, but later. So, but, uh, I guess what I wanna, uh, ask council, can I get, is, is there support to direct the city administrator to just focus on getting, calculating the water loss number? You see what I'm asking?
My understanding is they couldn't figure it out, and that's why we did the other, so we could get an accurate number, cause they, they're not able to give us that information, am I correct?
Uh, so the fifty percent was the rough number Sheldon came up with, he had asked our, um, uh, Darren Ekman, the gentleman engineer who designed the system, to review the numbers, so we've not heard back from him yet. Um, but in the meantime, I found that grant for the water detection and the meter testing, and so we did apply for that. Uh, but I can definitely follow up with Mr. Ekman on what his review of the numbers were.
Okay, so my understanding is, we know how much water we pump out of our wells in a given day and a given month.
Yep.
And we know much. And we know much, how much we sell, we take all the customers' accounts together. And then we, we, and the delta is the loss.
Correct.
So.
Yeah.
Have that, is, Cassell should be able to run that report, right, I mean, is.
I would think so, I can't say.
Okay, I guess that's my request to council, to have the city administrator do that homework, so we, so we can all agree. I don't like fifty percent, oh my God, it's alarming, it's hell. And I would not give clarity on what the real number is, you know? As much as possible, I know that won't be perfect, but we should be able to, just by using Cassell and then. You know, water pumped from the, the reservoir, or, or, or wells, we should have a very good, a, a good number. A, a, a much better number than what I feel like we're sitting on now.
Yeah.
So, is council supportive of asking the administrator to do that? It doesn't, it's not urgent, but I, I would like it, I don't know.
It shouldn't be that difficult to do, I would think.
No, Cassell does do that.
Okay.
It will give you the consumption for a month, two months, three months.
Right.
And then how much they put?
And then, yeah, and then when Sheldon reads the.
With the wells.
Yeah, then he knows how much was pumped out.
Right.
Um, that's.
So it should be fairly.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, uh, just to be clear, some what gets pumped is still in the well, it hasn't been sold yet. So there's gonna be some kind of delta in there.
Right.
And Ekman could kind of pull out those X factors.
Yeah.
To make sure it's, you know, again, relatively accurate.
Correct.
But that's not, you know, that is a required grant, that's all. I didn't want him letting down the road, let's go get a grant to do a water analysis, when we don't really know the number, that's why I'm.
The, just the grant is, is the detection system to, to actually test our older pipes that were not replaced.
Right.
Yes, that's, that's the bulk of the grant, is, is the leak detection, to test the rest of our pipes.
Oh, the rest of.
Yeah, so the grant's not just on figuring out the numbers, it's to test our older pipes that were not replaced in twenty twenty or twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Is it a piece of equipment?
Um, I think it's okay, yes, so essentially they, they go to shut offs, they isolate the pipe, has water in it. They have some kind of sound equipment and listen for water leaking.
So.
There, there are people who specialize in this.
So that's what this grant is to pay these people to come and do that, it's not a piece of equipment that we can.
No, it's, it's to, yeah, to bring in contractors, yeah.
Okay, that was my first one. And then, uh, just wanted to do a shout out to a fellow council member who joined me for Scotch Room Removal, uh, last week. Uh, we hacked, we hacked out for about two hours and I'm very proud to say. The north side of Dry Creek Road is Scotch Room Free, baby, there's no more Scotch Room, it's all gone. And there's seedlings out there, I showed them, you know, it's a very happy, uh, Douglas fir and grand fir are getting a new lease on life. Because they're not fighting with the Scotch Room. So, uh, yes, thanks.
So who is this council member that joined you?
Who?
He doesn't know how to say my last name.
Council member, wow. And, um, yeah, it was a lot of fun and, uh, it's cool improving public faces. And then, let's see.
That is the good news.
Yeah, trust me, I wanna get some yummies out there, uh, cause there's more to do. We're gonna work on South Side next, uh, let's see. And then can you repeat, when is the dumpster days?
October eighteen.
October, okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Courtney.
Um. I would absolutely love to be more of a date with what's going on at the school. I always feel like I'm hearing at the last minute, like, hey, it's tonight, I know I got an, an update on the casino night. I had bought a ticket last time around, but with, with budget woes, I got refunded on that ticket. And then I, um, has that happened yet?
October fourth, I think is the.
So it's the school and the museum, October fourth, on the Stern Wheeler.
On the Stern Wheeler, how exciting is that? I would, but yeah, I feel like, I like a lot of information in town, I'm always getting it like day of and.
I know that they put flyers at every business that will put them, I mean, like, it's visually, it's out there.
Just not looking at the right spots. Um. My studies sound amazing, I have too many animals at home, um. But, um. I'm really happy with a lot of the, with a lot of the agreements that we, we came together on tonight, like that was a really. Nice meeting. Thanks for keeping us on track and getting us out of here, everybody.
Mayor, I do, there's one more thing.
Okay.
Um, I'm, um. Uh, the previous counselor that, uh, was accused of tonight of not wanting the, um. Spanish speaking, that was not what that person wanted, that person just wanted a ratio, uh, of Spanish. Versus English, so I think that was taken out of context.
All right. Um. Have we heard anything from Derek on the tours with council?
Um, no, I'll follow, follow up with him.
Okay. And then I wanted to let council know, I'm sure you got the email and all that, that the forms were completed for the, um, HARPA. For the COVID money, so that is taken care of. Uh, we do have another report that will be due in April, so we kind of all put it on our radar, so that's not forgotten. Until the treasury posts is that they're completed with that, we have to report. So, good job for Shantae and Bennett and everybody, Kathy, everybody that worked on that. Cause that took a lot of work and in the meantime, there was a lot of other things going on, so in fairness. Eric, with everything going on, I mean, I was working on this, this here money, I was trying to figure out what was going on. When some of the appointments to committees and hiring and all these things, and I was on supposedly a vacation. So, I'm sorry, um, just wanted to let all the citizens know that this Saturday is yard debris. September thirteenth from eight to twelve, uh, so please bring your yard debris. Um, and then I had a meeting scheduled with Charles Young, which is the emergency management guy for Hood River County. And I needed to reschedule that to nine twelve, uh, because he was out in his warehouse working and did not hear the phone in there. Cause he didn't realize he didn't get serviced there, so we rescheduled for September twelfth to talk about a lot of things. So if council has any questions like about emergency management kind of things. Can you send them to me so I can make sure to get your questions in as well to him to, um, so we kind of know what's going on? Um, also, I would like to take time to meet with each of you guys, if you got like five or ten minutes. Just to pick your brains and see how everything's going, if that's okay? And then, um, let's citizens know that we have one opening on budget and one on planning. And then we'll have all of our committees still, so encourage people to apply. Um, and then, um, I had Kathy put these on. It was an email that I have from Maxim Dexter's office for high school students and stuff. It sounds really cool, so I wanted to be able to pass that on to people that, um, maybe have. Like Eric, cause he deals with high school kids all the time and anybody else that we can get people from our town to, uh, participate. And then I was wanting to see if we could get an LGIP statement, so we, we talked about how much money's in there. We've asked several times, can we, can council get that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then that is all I have, I wanna tell you guys thank you, cause I know this isn't always easy. Um. And it's most certainly not easy, and I'm a little off track, cause my sister is actually dying, as I said here. And so today has been a very long day and so I'm feeling a little bit off, that's probably why. So thank you guys, and then we will, um, call to recess this. Recess the regular session and we'll move into executive session. Um, for ORS one nine two. So, RRS one nine two point six six zero to a employment of public officers. Employees and agents under limited circumstances. And just a recording.
Okay, and now what?
Um, you gotta get some stop recording and then end the livestream.
You got YouTube as well?
Yeah. Do the three dots. And up the livestream. And stop lecture.